We're live.
Okay. Hey, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our public meeting of planning. Welcome to staff and to members of council and also to the anyone that is watching on Facebook Live. Are there any disclosures of conflict of interest? Seeing none, motion to accept the agenda. I have a motion moved by councillor Madden, seconded by councillor Noble, that the council, the township of North Glengarry accepts the public meeting of agenda Tuesday, October 13th, 2020. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Okay, moving on to ratify the minutes. I have a motion moved by councillor Manley, seconded by councillor Wentzink, that the council of the township of North Glengarry accepts the minutes of the public meeting of planning of Monday, September 14th, 2020. Are there any questions on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Zoning amendment, we have Z082020. Welcome, Kasia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sarah, if you could start the presentation, please.
Z082020.
Sarah, can you share the four points? Thank you. Okay, so we have the public meeting for Z082020. So, the applicant for this is Kent McSwain. The next slide, please. Next slide. Okay, so the property location is at 1836 County Road 34 in Delkeith. The lands are zoned and designated agricultural results or and general agricultural ag. Next slide, please. So, the purpose of this application is to rezone both the severed and retained land subject to consent application B9319. So, as council has seen many times in the past, this is a standard rezoning for surplus lot dwelling consent application. So, the lands are, the severed lot is to be rezoned from general ag to special exception AGPA to prohibit agricultural uses. And the retained lot is to be rezoned from general ag to special exception AGPR to prohibit residential development on that portion of the lands. So, just a bit of a background, the subject land has an area of about 96 acres
The subject land has an area of about 96 acres
and the applicant received conditional approval from SDG Counties on November 25th, 2019
and the applicant received conditional approval from SDG Counties on November 25th, 2019
to sever about 2.6 acres of land that is deemed surplus of the needs of the farm.
to sever about 2.6 acres of land that is deemed surplus of the needs of the farm. So, it's very important to note that actually the lands have been divided this way in the past.
So, it's very important to note that actually the lands have been divided this way in the past.
So, the owner did provide us with a deal of land dating back to 1974
So, the owner did provide us with a deal of land dating back to 1974 and the lines very closely matched to what they are proposed in this severance and rezoning.
and the lines very closely matched to what they are proposed in this severance and rezoning.
So, unfortunately, the applicant needed to reapply for a severance to have those
So, unfortunately, the applicant needed to reapply for a severance to have those
lines, property lines reinstituted.
lines, property lines reinstituted.
Next slide, please.
Next slide, please. So, this is the way it's being severed.
So, this is the way it's being severed. So, you have the retained portion, agricultural portion in blue
So, you have the retained portion, agricultural portion in blue
and the severed portion, which is the residential lot in red there.
and the severed portion, which is the residential lot in red there.
And you might also note, you can see B3819, that's another severance
And you might also note, you can see B3819, that's another severance
just to add more land to the retained lot, but it's not part of the discussion tonight.
just to add more land to the retained lot, but it's not part of the discussion tonight.
It's separate.
It's separate.
Next slide, please.
Next slide, please.
Okay, so the planning policy analysis, so the provincial policy statement 2014 and 2020
Okay, so the planning policy analysis, so the provincial policy statement 2014 and 2020
does permit residence surplus to a farming operation as a severance.
does permit residence surplus to a farming operation as a severance.
It's a common and applicable reason for severance.
It's a common and applicable reason for severance.
However, the new lot must be rezoned as to prevent agricultural development
However, the new lot must be rezoned as to prevent agricultural development
on the residential portion and conversely, residential development on the retained or farm portion.
on the residential portion and conversely, residential development on the retained or farm portion.
And the SDG County's official plan has a very similar policy
And the SDG County's official plan has a very similar policy
that limits the residential lots to about three acres
that limits the residential lots to about three acres
and requires this type of rezoning in front of you.
and requires this type of rezoning in front of you.
So, the consent application conforms to the rezoning requirements detailed within the policies above.
So, the consent application conforms to the rezoning requirements detailed within the policies above.
Next slide.
Next slide.
Therefore, is the recommendation of the planning department to approve zoning application Z082020.
Therefore, is the recommendation of the planning department to approve zoning application Z082020.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kasia. Okay, thank you, Kasia. Are there any questions from the members of council? Are there any questions from the members of council? This is the public portion, but you can ask questions or we can wait till we comes up in the next meeting. This is the public portion, but you can ask questions or we can wait till we comes up in the next meeting. Are there any questions from members of council? Are there any questions from members of council? Seeing none, Kasia, were there any, did you receive any comments? Seeing none, Kasia, were there any, did you receive any comments?
No, there was no comments from the public. No, there was no comments from the public.
Okay, and I won't ask these CAO to read it three times since nobody can join in. Okay, and I won't ask these CAO to read it three times since nobody can join in. So, we will move to adjournment. So, we will move to adjournment. I have a motion moved by councillor Noble, seconded by councillor Madden. I have a motion moved by councillor Noble, seconded by councillor Madden. There be no further business discussed. There be no further business discussed. The public meeting was adjourned at 6:36 PM. The public meeting was adjourned at 6:36 PM. All those in favor? All those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. Motion is carried, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the planning committee meeting. Okay, we're going to move on to the planning committee meeting. Are there any disclosure of conflict of interest from any member of the committee? Are there any disclosure of conflict of interest from any member of the committee? Seeing none, accept the agenda. Seeing none, accept the agenda. I have a motion moved by councillor Madden, seconded by councillor Noble, I have a motion moved by councillor Madden, seconded by councillor Noble, that the council of the township of North Glengarry accepts the planning committee meeting agenda that the council of the township of North Glengarry accepts the planning committee meeting agenda of Tuesday, October 13th, 2020. of Tuesday, October 13th, 2020. Any questions on the agenda? Any questions on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. Motion is carried, thank you. Ratify the minutes. Ratify the minutes. I have a motion moved by councillor Manley, seconded by councillor Wentzink, I have a motion moved by councillor Manley, seconded by councillor Wentzink, that the council of the township of North Glengarry accepts the minutes that the council of the township of North Glengarry accepts the minutes of the planning committee meeting of Monday, September 14th, 2020. of the planning committee meeting of Monday, September 14th, 2020. Any questions on the minutes? Any questions on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. Motion is carried, thank you. Okay, moving to zoning amendments, Z082020. Okay, moving to zoning amendments, Z082020. I have a motion moved by councillor Manley, seconded by councillor Wentzink. I have a motion moved by councillor Manley, seconded by councillor Wentzink. It is the recommendation of the planning department that application Z082020 It is the recommendation of the planning department that application Z082020 be forwarded to the council of the township in North Glengarry for further consideration and approval. be forwarded to the council of the township in North Glengarry for further consideration and approval. Kasia? Kasia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I don't have any details. So, I don't have any details. I presented everything during the public meeting. I presented everything during the public meeting. Any questions from council? Any questions from council?
Are there any questions from members of council? Are there any questions from members of council? Deputy Mayor Williams? Deputy Mayor Williams?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a clarification, you mentioned that the other lot that was identified on that plan, Kasia, Just a clarification, you mentioned that the other lot that was identified on that plan, Kasia, that it, that was a previous severance? that it, that was a previous severance?
So, the way I presented the severance with the rezoning today is actually almost exactly the same. So, the way I presented the severance with the rezoning today is actually almost exactly the same. It used to be in 1974, but because the two lots were in the same name, they merged It used to be in 1974, but because the two lots were in the same name, they merged according to the provincial policy that happens a lot, we've seen before. according to the provincial policy that happens a lot, we've seen it before.
Okay, so they, yeah, so they were, okay, so, so they were allowed to have the two separate, Okay, so they, yeah, so they were, okay, so, so they were allowed to have the two separate, the severance isn't a second severance then? the severance isn't a second severance then?
No, it's basically to reinstitute the property lines as the lots used to be separate in 1974. No, it's basically to reinstitute the property lines as the lots used to be separate in 1974. Almost exactly the same. Almost exactly the same.
Very good, thank you. Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further questions, councillor Manley? Any further questions, councillor Manley?
So, Kasia, then this application will not be, they will not be charging the in lieu of parkland fee? So, Kasia, then this application will not be, they will not be charging the in lieu of parkland fee?
Yes, correct. Yes, correct. So, Jacob revised it just to make sure the lines fit closely. So, Jacob revised it just to make sure the lines fit closely. They do so, he was waived that $1,000 fee. They do so, he was waived that $1,000 fee.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, any further questions? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, thank you. Motion is carried, thank you. I have a motion moved by councillor Wentzink, seconded by councillor Manley. I have a motion moved by councillor Wentzink, seconded by councillor Manley. There be no further business to discuss. There be no further business to discuss. The planning committee meeting was adjourned at 6:39 PM. The planning committee meeting was adjourned at 6:39 PM. All those in favor? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Motion is carried. Okay, we have a 20-minute break till a regular meeting of council starts. Okay, we have a 20-minute break till a regular meeting of council starts. So, I hope you'll stick around and watch. So, I hope you'll stick around and watch. Thanks. Thanks.
Is that directed to us, Jamie, or? Is that directed to us, Jamie, or?
Yes, that's directed to you guys to stick around. Yes, that's directed to you guys to stick around.
If I can. If I can.
Like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all members of council, staff and everyone watching on Facebook. I'd also like to just let everyone know that we've gone back to our Zoom meetings. There's been a few flare-ups in the local area and it's been recommended by the Eastern Ontario Health Unit to go back to Zoom meetings. Seeing none, except the agenda. Great. I don't have the, Sarah, do you have them? That, a motion moved by Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by Councilman Manley, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda of the regular meeting of council on October thirteenth, twenty twenty. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Adoption of the previous minutes of a motion moved by Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by Councilon Noble, that the minutes of the following meetings be adopted as circulated. Inaugural meeting, September twenty eight, twenty ten, twenty twenty. Regular meeting of council, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty. Are there any questions on these minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Moving on to delegations, I'd like to welcome Ken Fraser from our Audity Auditors Welch LLP to deliver our financial statements for twenty nineteen. Welcome, Ken.
Good evening. Hope you can hear me. I'm not used to the Zoom meetings, so bear with me if I can get through this presentation.
Okay.
So tonight, I basically have two presentations for you, one for the Glengarry Sports Palace and one for the township for their financial statements. We require council approval for both financials. So I'll start with the Glengarry Sports Palace. Let me see if I can share a document here that I wish to show you. So this is a document they'll be reviewing. If you wish to review it in front of you, I'm going to go to a PowerPoint presentation which is kind of summarizes it. I hope everybody can see the PowerPoint presentation now.
Yep.
Okay. So, status of the audit. We basically completed the audit for GSP. The only item that's remaining is council's approval. If you're following along with the draft financial statements in front of you, you'll notice that there's a big drop watermark. Once council has approved the statements, we'll remove that and put it on our letterhead. This will likely be the last financial statements that we'll be reporting on for GSP as the financial transactions and the accounts have all been consolidated with the township's books. So unless the township requires it, we will likely not do any further audited financial statements. On pages one and two is our independent auditor's report. It's dated today, which is the expected council approval. I only note that it's a clean audit opinion. We didn't come across any unusual items during our audit. If you have any questions at any point in time, I guess maybe raise your hands and it's hard to see.
Yeah. Interrupt you for a second, Ken. So I can't see everybody either. So if you do have a question, just speak up and and ask your question if there's something or just wait till the end. Thank you.
So page three of the draft financials is the statement of financial position. This lists the financial assets, financial liabilities, non-financial assets accumulated surplus, financial assets for GSP in December thirty first. Included cash accounts receivable and inventory for resale totaling fifty four thousand and twenty nine dollars. Financial liabilities comprise accounts payable, temporary borrowings, deferred revenue forty six thousand and ninety three dollars. Leaving net financial assets of seven thousand nine hundred and thirty six dollars. Quite an increase over the prior year. Non-financial assets, this includes the tangible capital assets, the arena, the parking lot and the various equipment. Seven hundred and ninety five thousand two oh five to give us an ending accumulated surplus of eight hundred and three thousand one forty one. An increase of about twenty three thousand over the year before. Statement operations for GSP, this lists the operating revenues and expenditures and other amounts we have for unusual government transfers. Operating revenues, if you're following along on the draft financial statements, we're looking at the middle column. Operating revenues, six hundred and twenty two thousand eight twenty six. An increase of about twenty two thousand over the year before. The two thousand nineteen amount does include the fifty thousand dollar government transfer from the township of South Glengarry. According to that contract agreement signed in two thousand nineteen. The operating expenditures, six hundred and sixty seven thousand one eighty. A decrease of about seventeen thousand the year before. Leaving us with net operating expenditures of forty four thousand three fifty four. So a decrease from the year before. The other net adjustment for other government transfers, sixty seven thousand two oh six. That's really the net amount that was forgiven by the township of North Glengarry. There was a fifty thousand dollar line of credit advanced. Eighteen thousand of that was repaid, the remainder was forgiven. And in our books for two thousand eighteen, there was an amount owing back to the township according to the old agreement that was also forgiven. So the annual surplus for two thousand nineteen ended with a positive number, twenty two thousand eight fifty two. You know, in the draft financial statements, there's a lot of notes supporting the the numbers as well as required disclosures. I'm not going to go over that unless somebody has specific questions on them. If there are no questions, then I want to turn to the townships audited statements.
Okay, go ahead.
So this, you know, this, this is the draft, if you wish to follow along. Again, I'll follow, I'm just going to go with the, our PowerPoint presentation. So this, the audit status for North Glengarry, again, our audit is complete. We need the approval of the financials by council and will also require the representation letter to be signed by the CIO and Treasurer to release the final versions. Again, they're marked, they're stamped draft, approved. Pages two and three is our independent auditor's report. Again, stated today, made of council approval. In this case, it isn't a clean opinion. We had to qualify the audit opinion as has been the what we've had to do in the last couple of years related to an amount set up for insurance recoveries related to the property tax investigation. Unfortunately, we're unable to get confirmation from the insurance provider that they're going to pay that amount. Hopefully that'll get cleared up in twenty twenty. But the, for the time being, without confirmation of the amount, we have to qualify the statement. Name of the financial position, financial assets for the township, comprised of cash, taxes receivable, accounts receivable, both short term and long term. Total amount at the end of two thousand nineteen amounted to eleven million, one hundred and thirty two thousand and eighty dollars. Financial liabilities comprise accounts payable, employee benefits payable, deferred revenues, landfill closure and post closure estimates and municipal debt. Tolling sixteen million, one forty one, five thirty four. Leaving us, leaving us with a net financial liability of five million and nine thousand four hundred and fifty four dollars at the end of two thousand nineteen. Non-financial assets mainly comprised of the tangible capital assets. You saw, you'll see there's a big jump. Approximately twelve million mainly due to the Maxwell Water Project. So the accumulated surplus for the township at the end of two thousand nineteen, sixty seven million fifty six dollars. Sorry, sixty seven million fifty six thousand and forty two dollars, up about six point eight million over the year before.
Ken, if I can, I have a question, please. It relates to the previous slide. I'm sorry. I'm gonna go, because I was on mute there. If you can go back to the other one, please.
This one?
Thank you, yes. So you said it's a clean opinion, aside from the question.
Sorry, it was a clean opinion for Glengarry Sports Palace. For the township, it's a qualified opinion basically related to that insurance, insurance.
Okay, so what, what does that mean?
It means that the, the statements are all clean except for that one amount that's set up as a receivable. We're unable to confirm whether it's accurate or not. The insurance basically hasn't given any, any proof that it's going to pay the five hundred and fifty thousand that's set up. So we're basically not sticking our neck out to say that you're going to recover that.
Okay, so we're, we're, we're still waiting for word on that.
Yes, obviously. They were waiting for the court proceedings to end.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, hopefully that'll be soon. But the qualified opinion has been in the statements for the last few years because
Yes.
that's, that amount's been there for a few years now.
Okay.
Each year, we hope that it gets cleaned up, but drags on.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay. So the statement of operations, operating revenues total for two thousand nineteen. Again, if you're looking at the draft statements in front of you, it's the middle column on page five. Fourteen million, six hundred and one thousand two forty three, up about four hundred and fifty thousand over the year before. Operating expenditures, fourteen million, one seventy six, eight forty three. Up about four hundred and ten thousand from the year before. Leaving us with a net operating surplus of four hundred and twenty four thousand four hundred for two thousand nineteen. Very close to the year before. On a budget of fifteen million, I think that's very good. Capital items and other revenues for PSAB purposes. Any grants really received for capital projects are listed as revenue on statement of operations. We segregate them because, you know, most of that revenue has been reinvested into the tangible capital assets. In your case, there was large amounts over the last two years related to the Maxwell Water Project. So annual surplus, including those capital revenues, six million, eight hundred and seventy five thousand, seven hundred and fifty seven dollars for two thousand nineteen. Any questions?
Any questions from any members of council?
So, so Ken, is it just the, between two thousand nineteen and two thousand and eighteen, it was just the, the funding that came in for the Maxwell Water was just split over those two years? Is that what, is that what that's showing?
That's correct, yeah. Yeah, that's why the capital, capital revenues is such higher amount in eighteen. There was more advanced last year and then basically the final amounts were received in two thousand.
Yeah, thank you.
No further questions on that? Okay.
There are some notes that the council may wish to review. You know, at their leisure, which may give more explanation, you know, note eight is breakdown of tangible capital assets. You'll see a large increase for the Maxwell Water Project. Note nine gives a breakdown in municipal debt. There was a new loan for seven point five million in the year, but there was five point four million repaid. And note ten gives a breakdown in accumulated surplus. The only real item to note is there was a new reserve set up for the modernization funding as per council's request. Well, that's, that's basically the end of my, my presentations. I know I went through them fairly quick, but I don't know about you, but most people are, get bored by financial figures.
This council loves it, Ken. We love it. So, no, thank you, Ken, for that. Any members of council have any questions? Seeing none? Again, thank you very much, Ken. I think you're going to stay on for us to pass a resolution or you leave?
Yes, if you could pass separate resolutions for the financial statements for GSP and for the township, then our, our work will be done.
Okay. We're not, are we doing that only under C, Sarah?
Yeah, so we under C.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to staff reports. Under administration, we have number one, by-election report. I have a motion moved by Councilman Madden, seconded by Councilman Noble, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report AD two thousand twenty sixteen for information purposes. Sarah?
Sorry, there's a delay. So this is our report on the by-election that was held a few weeks ago, which saw our new councillor, Michael Madden, be elected that day on September twenty eighth. As required report due to the Municipal Act and the Elections Act. I also have to report on the accessibility of the election. As council is aware, we held the election at the Sandfield Centre. The Sandfield Centre is ADOA compliant. We did a paper ballot and I can say that the constituents that came in that day to vote were very complimentary of the setup. We had two polling stations and myself and my administrative assistant were the ones taking the voting cards. The deputy clerk and our waterworks building assistant was helping with registrations and also providing some assistance for anyone who needed direction to get out of the building. So we had the entrance at the, at the front of the building and then in the grass at the side and it seemed to work really well. Council can see that we have five hundred and seventy votes that week and we did provide a bit of charts for, for you to, to see. It was quite interesting. We seemed to get a rush in the morning. It died down in the afternoon and then certainly on the last day, we did have quite a few votes in the evening. So we will take some of that into consideration when we start to plan for the two thousand twenty two election also. When we think about time and dates for councils to consider for the in-person voting.
Great, thank you. Any questions from members of council? Deputy Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Sarah, I thought that staff did a great job of, you know, of putting this by-election together and ran very smoothly. My, my one observation, and I did have comments from, from various residents that they, they would have appreciated the polling stations to be open a little bit later rather than it end at four o'clock. So I think for those who work, I know it was open late on, on, on voting day, but I think it's just something we need to think about for next time.
Yeah, we've, we've started to think about that a little bit. We're thinking about maybe doing two advance polls in the morning on a couple of days and then a two advance polls maybe, or one maybe in the evening and then one full day again. I think the full, the full day is very important, but we found some of the older people like to come in the morning. They are out and about, they like to come. There wasn't as busy for them to come during that time, so they got out in the morning. So we were already sort of starting to think about that and also maybe some locations, because it won't be just obviously one location in two thousand twenty two, so.
Councilman Manley?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. I know we had a twenty five percent. I know we had a twenty-five percent voter turnout and I know if you look at other by-elections in various regions or whatever, that's pretty much standard, right?
Think it adds something.
I don't think that's, I don't think it's acceptable, right? I don't think twenty-five percent is acceptable. So I think we have to look at ways to get more people out to vote. And so if that means that we go to online voting as well as in paper, paper ballots, then I think we should look at that. I think the fact that we had a vote, the voting day was on Friday, which I don't think is a good day to be voting, especially that was our only time for residents who worked during the day. Friday was the only time that they could come in from four to eight o'clock. And after you've worked a week and then Friday rolls around, it's about the last thing you want to do probably is go and go and vote on a Friday night. So that's something I think we need to look at. And I like your suggestion, Sarah, about about different times during the during the the advanced polls. I think that's that's good. But I think we somehow we've we've got to get more than twenty-five percent of the voters out. That's my thoughts.
Yeah, the difficulty, Councilman, with the online voting with the by-election is the timelines are very short. So the online voting takes a little bit longer to set up with the cards and everything. So certainly, we've started to think about that, too. We've started to think about the uptake on the telephone voting. So when I was going back in voter view and looking at some of the stats, like we I think we could do better with that. But definitely, we found some people wanting to come at four fifteen, like when we were just sort of leaving the parking lot, there were people waiting there. We felt very upset, like not to be able, because you couldn't reopen the pool. So we are looking at some evening advanced polls. And yeah, with the by-election, it's a bit shorter of a timeline. You know, with a regular election, we get things well in advance. So that's just the difference between the by-election and the the total election because in the Alexandria award last time, we had very good attendance. Also, I think for that is COVID. I think we had people who were might have been a bit worried, even though we were we were quite well set up. But we, you know, the online voting, it does take longer to do. It does require more integration. So it's difficult in the by-election.
Yeah, no, I agree a hundred percent. I just think that that we just do at twenty-five percent, we just need, we can't say that's good enough. Because it's not good enough in my it's not good enough. And I'm happy to hear that you're you're looking at other other things or whatever to help increase that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good points, Counselor Manley. Any other further questions, Counselor Noble?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I believe the article said forty, of course, I'm unstable. Forty-three percent for the last election. And I wondered if we can do both again, because I know what a lot of people missed out here was in-person voting. So I was able to convince a bunch of people to learn how to do it on the computer, whether they came here or at home. A bunch of people did it on the phone. That was terribly easy. But everyone asked like, oh, am I not going to the hall? And when we did the Glenn, same thing. Are we not going to the school? So I think as much as it, as much work as it is and maybe a little more money, I think the in-person voting, too, was something that was missed on the last election.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Madden?
Just one quick question. I the financial implications, I see the costs were paid through the elections reserve. I'm just wondering if there's an actual number of what the cost was for this.
You mean, how much are you worth?
Phrase it that way?
Um, off the top of my head, I'd say it's around three or four thousand. We have to rent the tabulators. So they're just a rental, the ones that you saw that day. The ballots are expensive enough, but the cards that you send out with the postage, that's that's the most expensive piece. We do get a bit of a deal with the bulk. But I think it was between three and five thousand. So, I mean, that's one small section. When you get into the online, again, there's another cost to that. So we use voter view, but when you do the online, you then have another, it's called Intelivote that you use for that. So there's a bit of a more of an integration between the telephone, the ballot and the the online. But yeah, so it was, we had money left over in the election reserve from the last election. Because as councillor Noble pointed out, we only had the one in person last time. So that did save us money with the the tabulators. But certainly just working with the tabulators a second time this go around, it was very simple. So there there might be a possibility to set up. Because we did have some feedback and I know just being at the township office in the last election, there's a bit of mayhem just having one in-person voting. So I think to split that out, I like the location at the Sandfield Centre. I think we'll do that again for Alexandria. And then certainly, maybe we can look at different points within the township to set up some more in-person. But certainly, staff always bring back reports to council on the election. So we'll be bringing one back more than likely at the end of two thousand twenty-one. That's where we bring our election procedures and everything. And then council gets to decide how we want to do the next election in two thousand twenty-two.
Tabulators were great. It was nice getting election results at eight oh two as opposed to, well, sometimes not getting them until one AM the next morning with computers, which was a little weird. But Counselor Wincing, you had a comment?
Yes, I'm glad to hear that we're looking at different ways to allow people to vote. I agree with Jack that it will certainly increase the ability for the constituents to vote if they have different options. And if they can vote by mail or by phone, then there's less need for people at the polls. And I completely understand how important it is to have time available in the evening for those who do work full-time. I'm wondering, is there still money left in the reserve for the next election?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. So we put money away every year, Council Wincing, for the election and then it goes into the reserve and then we pull that money in the reserve the year of the election. So the money that was left over for the by-election was actually money left over from the two thousand eighteen of by-election in the reserve. So that way, we don't have a big expense in the year of the election. We put money away every year. And then we reevaluate every four years to see if we have enough money in there, depending on how we change how we do the voting. Because like I said, the the mail-out individual cards, that's what gets expensive with the postage. So, but I mean, and that's certainly something we would never take away. I'm just saying that that's one of the things that that does cost.
Perfect. No further questions? You can't remember this is that the we accept the staff report. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, moving on to Community Services Department, CIP, application three sixty Main Street, South Alexandria. I have a motion moved by Counselor Manley, second by Deputy Mayor Williams. The council receives a staff report number CS two thousand twenty dash twenty-one. And that council approves the recommendation from the Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee for the Community Improvement Plan project at three sixty Main Street, South Alexandria, as submitted by Alain Paudier, authorized delegate for L and R, Ronge Inc., Programme A, Planning and Design Grant, representing a matching grant of fifty percent up to a maximum of fifteen hundred dollars paid in two equal installments. Programme B, Building Improvement and Infield Grant, representing a matching grant of fifty percent up to a maximum of five thousand for works to one facade. Programme C, Address Grant, representing one civic sign provided by the municipality as part of its civic sign program. And Programme E, Building Permit Free Grant, representing a matching grant of one hundred percent up to the maximum of seven fifty. And the total grants are seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Welcome in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm pleased to bring this report to council. This report was actually presented to the Arts Culture and Heritage Committee on October fifth. And the report itself contains information on a facade improvement project for a building better known as Tapiricharangé in the south end of Alexandria. So the program has several components. As you saw, there's a planning and design grant. There is a fifty percent matching grant for the facade improvement up to a maximum of five thousand dollars. A CIP municipal address sign as well as a hundred percent grant up to a maximum of seven hundred and fifty dollars for a building permit. Council and their report can see that submissions were received according to the CIP guidelines for this project. And we do have photos of the existing front facade as well as a design showing what the facade will look like once it's renovated. I must say that the project was very well received by the Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee. There were a couple of concerns. One of them was the building of an accessible ramp at the front of the the building itself. But when discussing with the owners or the project manager for this project, they indicated that they have an alternative entrance that is already equipped with an accessible ramp. So we were pleased to be able to provide that information. And another concern was possibly the the positioning of the signage at the front of the building. And they are open to reevaluating how that will go once they had they start moving the project forward. So we're pleased to bring this to council and we're hoping that council will accept the Arts and Culture and Heritage Committee's recommendation of passing this CIP.
That's great. Thank you, Ann. Deputy Mayor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ann, is there any way you can share your screen for the benefit of the people who are online? Because the the rendering of the redesign of that building is pretty impressive and I think if if people can see it, it would be of benefit.
I will try. Here we go.
No?
She said, here we go.
Okay.
Can you see the?
Yeah.
Rendering. So it is quite lovely. I can go to what the building actually looks like presently, and this is the view. And the new building, even though it does have some modern aspects to it, still includes a cornish at the top. And that really reflects some of the heritage elements of Alexandria.
I I just if I may continue, Mr. Mayor, I I just think this this project is a fine example of the 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 real success that this program is bringing to North Glengarry.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Seeing, oh, go ahead, Counselor Noble.
I just wanted to know, Ann, do they have an idea when they can start?
Actually, as soon as possible.
Oh, cool.
Great. No further questions? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Moving on to the Treasury Department, two thousand nineteen audited financial statements. I have a motion moved by Counselor Noble, second by Counselor Manley, that council accepts the two thousand nineteen audited consolidated financial statements as presented by Ken Fraser of Welch LLP, Chartered Professional Accountants at Open Council, October thirteenth, two thousand twenty. Any discussion? We have our treasurer here.
Yeah.
This is probably. I just saw you pop up.
This is probably the shortest report in history. And it's basically just to formalize the approval of the financial statements for both the GSP and the North Glengarry. And sorry, that's my dog.
Counselor Manley, you had a question?
Oh, just I just wanted to make sure that this was, Ken had asked for two separate motions, I think.
Another motion coming up.
Oh, there is.
My concern is to, sorry, is for two separate ones. And this one was to.
Okay.
If he needs to, he needs to.
Okay, so Ken still on? Do we need to?
Hello? Yeah, yeah. If you can, you can pass one resolution if they're both stated.
Okay.
Okay.
We have the audited consolidated financial statements by Ken Fraser.
I did consolidated financial statements of the Township of North Glengarry and Glengarry Sports Palace.
Yeah.
There it's very clear.
Hope they can read my writing tomorrow, but so that council accepts the two thousand nineteen audited consolidated financial statements of the Township of North Glengarry and Glengarry Sports Palace as presented by Ken Fraser of Welch LLP, Chartered Professional Accountants at Open Council, October thirteenth, two thousand twenty. And I'm assuming that's good with both the mover and the secondary councillor Noble and councillor Manley. Okay, any further questions? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to planning, building and bylaw enforcement, part lot control. Bylaw thirty-nine, twenty twenty, I have a motion moved by councillor Madden, second by councillor Wincing, that bylaw thirty-nine, twenty twenty, being a bylaw to authorize the lifting of part lot control. Be read and passed in open council, signed and sealed this thirteenth day of October, two thousand twenty. Casher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sarah is putting the report in front of you. So just a quick background for partial control. So partial control can be applied for in certain cases, for example, semi-detached dwelling instead of a severance. It's just a faster and more affordable process for the applicants. So in front of you, you have the the first case during my career here at the township. So the property is located on Etier Boulevard, Lot nine and subdivision fourteen M three in Alexandria. Currently, there is a semi-detached dwelling that is being built. The foundations have been poured already. So this approach is used because of the difficulty the owner would have of ensuring the common center line between the two semi-detached dwellings for it to be constructed exactly on that property line in the middle. So once the foundation is in place, a reference plan will be prepared. And from the reference plan, accurate legal descriptions are determined for both property owners and the individual lots can be sold. So part of that control is subject to the Planning Act, Section fifty-seven. So as part of this Section fifty-seven, council may provide an exception to a plan of subdivision that it does not apply to lands within a plan of subdivision, as is in this case being presented in front of you today. So the next steps is for council to approve the bylaw and then it's going to be forwarded to the counties for the final approval and stamping. Any questions? Thank you.
Any questions from members of council? Counselor Manley?
So Cash, this is this is our first one of these that you've done?
Yes.
I don't remember seeing anything like this before.
Is the first one correct for upon subdivision? Yes.
And is this being used in other, obviously, another municipalities if it's if it's part of the?
Yes, it's a very common approach, especially to semi-detached dwellings, just to split the property line in the middle.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I do believe we've seen this before, right?
We've, yes, he's saying it's her first time she's seen.
Right. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? See none? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you, Casha.
Thank you.
Public Works Department petition to install speed bumps. Dean?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We received the attached petition to install a speed bump on Bishop Street. And we are required to bring it to council for considerations. So I've got a couple of comments. By adding a speed bump into our roadway, it's gonna put us in a situation, we could be liable for any damage that happened motorcycle, car. And plus this section of roadway, there's a stop sign, one block north and two blocks south of there. So it's not a very long section of roadway installing something like this. So we're asking if we want to follow up or what we want to do next for this.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Counselor Manley, then Counselor Noble?
Yeah, I think I think maybe we should leave this for the sort of the study or whatever we're going to have over speeds in in North Glengarry. I think it could be part of that, part of that plan or whatever, maybe to look at them and look at other other places that have installed them and and that kind of thing. And just to see what, you know, if 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 they do, if they do what they're supposed to do, right? Reduce the the speed or whatever. I'm sure there have been other other municipalities that have done done installed speed bumps or whatever. So we hopefully get some some information, maybe when we look at the overall speeds of of our our traffic in North Glengarry.
I'd I'd spoken to one of the authors of this petition and told them that we were going to be looking at speeds on all our roads. So they were happy to hear that. So we'll just have to see what happens in the when we can get that report done. Counselor Noble?
Yeah, Dean, I know you explained this to us the other day, but then I see, and I'm assuming this is Bob's signature. And I wonder if that's something I I'm sad that we don't. And I wonder if that's something I, I'm sad that we don't actually have this in place already, but if this is a, a section of road that he uses a lot, could we at least get that sign up or some kind of signage?
So what kind of signage were you asking?
I'm assuming that's Bob's signature near the bottom, asking for a sign showing that there's a person with a guide dog walking in the area.
Okay.
I'm just wondering, that should be an easy fix. If that's one of his common routes, then, because he is out all the time. So that would make him safer. That, that might also slow people down, because that's a, a human thing, not just a speed.
Definitely.
Thanks.
Yes, we can definitely look at that.
Okay, any further questions, Counselor Madden?
Just one comment out on this. In the, uh, the preamble to the petition, they mentioned, um, the lack of respect for the stop signs. So I agree, there's a short section there. Uh, I know that those stop signs are not always being respected. And in addition to speed study, if we can look at something with maybe, uh, a little more enforcement in town, there's very little presence. Uh, and there's a lot going on that could use some enforcement and reinforcement of the fact that this is a town, and there's a lot of people that live here, and there are a lot of people that are concerned about what's going on. Uh, just something to, uh, to remember for our upcoming undertakings.
Yep, good points. Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none? Okay, thank you, Dean. Going to, or move on to Fire Department, Burn Bylaw forty-eight, twenty nineteen, Farm and Agriculture Girl Burn Dates. I have a motion moved by Counselor Noble, seconded by Counselor Manley, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry authorizes the fire chief to grant a one-time exemption to bylaw forty-nine, twenty nineteen, Part Five, Section five point three, to permit farm and agricultural burns to any farmer wishing to burn starting on October fifteenth, twenty twenty, and that staff be directed to advertise this change to the permitting system. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Um, as you were, um, back in November two thousand nineteen, uh, council approved a new bylaw uh, for the opened, uh, fires, uh, which included some changes in, to the Part Five Farm and Agricultural, um, Fires, which was, uh, Part Nine of the bylaw. Where, uh, burning was not to be permitted, um, between June first and November first. Um, since, um, we've had great results in terms of, um, compliance and, in, um, to this, the new changes. However, we've, uh, I've been approached by various stakeholders within the community to, um, to see if we can start burning, uh, earlier and, uh, requesting. Um, you know, I've looked at the various, um, environmental factors and so forth. So at this point, I'm, uh, I'm putting a motion forward to request a proposal, one time, uh, change to the bylaw where we would allow burning to start October fifteenth, which is, uh, only two weeks in advance. Um, at, at this time, uh, this wouldn't have any changes to any other parts of the bylaw. All other, um, conditions of the bylaw would remain in place. It would be solely a one-time, uh, aspect for twenty twenty to move this forward to, uh, October fifteenth.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Are there any, uh, questions from members of, uh, council? Deputy Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm just, uh, with, with regards to this one-time change. I know that in the context of our tree-cutting bylaw, which we're currently working on, we've been talking to the agricultural community about an, an actual review of the dates of the agricultural burn in the burn bylaw. So just when, when do you anticipate, Matthew, a, uh, a review of, of this bylaw?
This is where, um, as we indicated when we first, um, uh, when council first approved the bylaw, we want to see, uh, reflect on it after at least a year. So we're coming, uh, up to that year mark where we're gonna, um, we want to see right up to that, that, that period, if there's any changes. It's been very positive in terms of, uh, it was a very good year. Um, given the environmental conditions currently, this is, this is why I'd be only granting this one time, uh, until we could conduct a review of the, um, the bylaw again. And at that point, uh, once the review's conducted, um, then it'll be brought forward to council, uh, report, uh, it, and propose any additional changes to the bylaw.
So, so you mean in the, in the new year, you're thinking?
Yeah, as soon as we, um, we start up the new, uh, most likely in, in December, uh, and, uh, January, that's whenever we maybe look at, uh, we're gonna be obviously conducting the review from November two to January, as this is when, um, the firing, uh, agricultural burns are gonna become effective again. And, um, I don't foresee any issues, um, with the permitting. We didn't have any issues in the springtime with any, uh, farming or agricultural burns, so, um, most likely, we, we have some proposals to, to move forward after the, the first year of, of trials.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, can we also just make sure that, uh, we advertise this on all our mediums that we have, uh, Facebook and, uh, our website, uh, the, I know the Fire Department has their own, uh, just to make sure the word gets out, or maybe a quick letter to the, uh, uh, Glengarry, uh, the GFA, maybe just, uh, so that they can let all their members know. So I think it's just, uh, it, it just shows a willingness by council to, uh, you know, to bend a little bit when the, uh, the conditions are right. And I think the conditions are right to do this, so. Any further questions? Counselor Noble?
I just wanted to say, I don't, I don't really think that October fifteenth is gonna be a problem. Um, the weather that we had on Saturday was a gift. After Thanksgiving, that generally doesn't happen. So, you know, we might have had the windows open all day Saturday and maybe some Sunday, but I don't see it for the rest of the month. But are you going to go with how many permits that you sell in the next couple of weeks to kind of judge how important it was? Or will this kind of be a false thing because it wasn't already in place? And I do have to say, uh, at the risk of offending some people, it was, it was a nice summer.
I think, though, uh, Counselor Noble, this is what we're going to be talking about when it comes back to council. Uh, in, in December or January, I think this is the discussions that we're going to have. Uh, you know, and I just don't know if it's a discussion for tonight, but it.
No, yeah, I just wanted to know if that's, if that'll be one of the, the things is judging on how many people take it. Okay.
Okay, any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Okay, Consent Agenda. We have the Community Development Committee Minutes, Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee Minutes, Public Meeting and Planning Minutes, and the Planning Committee Minutes from September fourteenth. I have a motion moved by Counselor Wensink, seconded by Counselor Manley, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives the items from the Consent Agenda for information purposes only. Any questions on any of those items? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Uh, New Business, the Purple Ribbon Campaign. So I'll take ten minutes to read this. It's important, so, uh, moved by myself, uh, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams, Child and Youth Safety and Well-being Proclamation. Whereas the Children's Aid Society of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry is mandated to protect every child and youth and their right to safety and well-being. The society invites all citizens to join in a collective effort to help protect our children, and whereas it is a community problem and finding solution depends on involvement among people throughout the community. And whereas the effects are felt by the whole communities and need to be addressed by the entire community. And whereas effective awareness prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social services agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas all citizens should become more aware of the negative effects on our children and youth. When safety and well-being is compromised, its prevention lies within the community. And becomes, becomes involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe, nurturing environment. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Jamie McDonald, Mayor of North Glengarry, do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty as Child and Youth Safety and Well-being Month in the township of North Glengarry, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to protect children and youth, thereby strengthening the community in which we live. Are there any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Uh, notice of motion, next regular meeting of council will be Monday, October twenty-second, uh, twenty-six at seven PM. Um, we'll make a call at that point whether we're still, uh, doing via Zoom, which I am assuming we will be, but, uh, or will be trying to do it in, in person, but we'll know a little bit in advance. Uh, we have an in proceeding camera closed session. I just also would like to remind any of the citizens of North Glengarry that are listening, uh, this evening. I'll get you in a second, Deputy Mayor. Um, the, just that we, uh, we have, we've had a flare up in, uh, North Glengarry with some cases. So we're just asking people to be vigilant, uh, wear your masks, and, uh, just, uh, social distancing is very important. So we're asking people just to, uh, to heed that call because, uh, we just don't want our businesses to have to close again. And, uh, we want to remain open, uh, for business. So, uh, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, that, that's a good message. I, I, I just want to, for, for those, I know that the, uh, the community is, is, uh, really liking the Facebook Live, uh, feed of our council meetings. So I, I just wanted to, uh, whether or not we're in person or on Zoom, um, uh, I just want to make sure that we're going to be able to, uh, live feed our, our next council meeting.
Yes, I think, uh, I think that we've received that hardware that, uh, come in, that we'll be able to do that, uh, through the eScribe.
Yeah. Okay, I think that's important. Thanks.
Okay, Counselor Madden.
Just a quick comment to add to your message. Uh, I would encourage people to download the government account tracking app for COVID. It is effective, and there are little to no privacy issues. You're already on a smartphone, you're already on a computer, you're already on social media, that you are giving them absolutely nothing that you haven't given the whole world already. Uh, it works, and it is effective, and it can help what we are trying to deal with.
Good message. Thank you. Counselor Noble, did you have your hand up? No? Okay. Uh, no further questions? She was saying that we should wash our hands too. I think that's what she turned it, the message I'm getting. Thank you, Counselor Noble. Okay, so we will be proceeding in camera. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening, and we hope that you'll join us at future meetings. Thank you. Have a good night.